I'll call the Estategia Agency Order. We don't have the action wishes, but that's been issued to the council. So I will pay a motion to adjourn. The council is developing what needs served before we ask help. Thank you. Moved by Randy.
I call finance creative. First item up, 2012 audit acceptance.
So, in everyone's mail, you should have received the copy of the audit for 2012, for the city. And I'm going to walk you through the audit focusing on the general water, sewer, and irrigation funds. And Tony Barrie will give an overview of the single audit. Here today with us is Bruce Sack, Bruce Sack and Company, the auditor for the city. He'll be available for any questions that you may have also.
I know I received it.
It's already emailed.
But it's been emailed within the past over the back of the email.
Yeah, the email.
Because of the size of it.
So what I'd like to do if I may, is point you to the audit itself and start on page five. Would you like to follow the document? Do you need a copy? Sure. Yes. And that's the one that's pending. Yes, the one that includes the written report basis financial statements. So if you look at page five, this is the operations of the general fund for 2012. And what I'm going to focus on is actual versus the modified budget. You look at our revenues, our revenue is 77.6 million. And compare that budget of 79.4, it looks at if our revenues were under budget. But that's really not the story. Because our budget included approximately $5.4 million of reserves, funds the city thought it may need to support its operations in 2012. We did not. So really why don't we get 77.6 compared to the budget before those transfers of 73.9. So we did a very good job of maximizing our revenues. And if you look at our expense side, you'll see that our expenses were 74, slightly more than 74 million compared to a budget of 79.6. Again, that's a good story from a budget perspective. I want to just point out there were several things that gave us these results. Lines such as our debt service line were under budget. Always try to be conservative when you budget that, so that's really what you want to see. And our fire and lease apartments came in on the budget. So that public safety expenses were considered under budget. Overall, employee benefit expenses were under budget also. And we, if you look at the actual expenditures then of 77.6 compared to our expenditures of 74.2, we produced a surplus of approximately $3.5 million. And that's basically what our operations did for us in 2012. If you're looking at the document, you can then click that to the balance sheet, which will find on page four. And you'll see that we have created a one balance of approximately $12.9 million. And that's made off of a not spendable amount of $102,000, which is for a prepaid expense. And our restricted reserves of $9 million approximately. Just a quick overview, those include tax stabilization funds for future potential use and security. Debt service reserves of about $1.3 million. And the way we structured our restricted debt service reserves in all of our funds was to try to hit a target of a percentage of our maximum annual debt service. And this in a general fund, which is about 72% of the maximum annual debt service. So it gives us a nice piece of security. There's funds in there for lawsuits and search areas, as well as capital reserve monies and snow ice. You then look at the sign, that amount is our open purchase order, the $91,000. And that with the balance is 3.7 almost of unassigned funds for the city. And that's approximately 4.7% of our 2013 budget. And that's, like doing some research and looking through various resources, a whole of about 5% of your next year's budget is a good number to try to get. So we are 4.7% of the general fund. And move on to water fund, which starts on page six. And here you'll see both the operations on the lower part and the balance sheet on the top part. For our water fund, I'm going to focus first on operations at the bottom. 7.9 was our revenue compared to 10 million of our modified budget. Now, one point I want to make here is for both the water, sewer, and ball fund, the 2012 budget was adopted and put together. A payment that all of these funds had to make the final payment to our general fund, paying back the 2004 loan, had to be budgeted and paid for in 2012. It's paid for, taken care of, but it wasn't budgeted. So all of these funds, pretty much the appropriated fund balance you see here in modified budget is recognizing that maybe you should have got that in there and should have been funded. We have paid it. So if you look at 7.9, you really want to compare that to the 8.1 number. And you really did pretty good there. As well as if you look at your expenditures, 8.7 compared to 10.2, the budget operation there was also very good. Just looking at pure revenues and expenditures, we have a deficit in this fund of about $800,000. But again, keep in mind that $1.9 million repayment to the general fund wasn't budgeted before. So if we had, we probably would have had a surplus of around $900,000. Just vacancies and bills, healthcare costs being lower than budgeted, and plant controls for carbon costs, chemical costs, that type of thing mainly contributes to the results you see here. If you look on the top of the balance sheet, we have about $2.4 million in restricted funds. And those are our reserves, capital reserves, about $1.9 million. The debt service reserve a little under $500,000. And that's about 25% of the maximum annual debt service. And for this fund, which we probably would want to work for is maybe a 50% maximum annual debt service. But that's a calculation that we have this year and a small contingency reserve. The assigned balance you see here of 1.6 supports a small amount of purchase orders that were opened in the throes of 2014, about $7,000. And then the balance is equal to approximately 20% of the next year's budget. That's the controller's recommendation to have in these councilary funds, about 20% of your next budget. And that's what that is. So moving on to the sewer fund on the next page. Again, the story is pretty similar in that if you're looking at the bottom of the sheet, you see that we have 10.9 of actual revenue compared to 11.2 of our modified budget. But in this one, there's an approximate $615,000 payment that was due to the general fund. So that pretty much is the disconnect there. Expenditures of 10.2 compared to our budget, expenditures of 11.5. And much of the story here is very much the same, power costs, healthcare costs, savings in those areas. So our operations produced a $800,000 surplus in this fund, which we didn't have a loan repayment, but just a little bit higher. If you look above, that translates to a $6.6 million fund balance for the sewer fund. And we have restricted funds of about 4.4. Those are made up of the same types of funds as if you like, we like to carry in our other capital reserves of just under $3 million. Debt service reserve of just under a million, that's about 51% of the maximum annual debt service for this fund. And some smaller air funds and contingency reserves. And the $2.1 million signed balance is, again, purchase orders totally about 9,000. And then the 20% of the next year's budget. Recreation fund, this is my fund that I'll give details on, is, again, it's set up the same way. Now, operations on the bottom, a little over a million in revenue was generated compared to a modified budget of about 1.3. But in this fund, it was 177.5, 177,000. That was due to the 2004 loan repayment. So our revenue is pretty close to matching what our budget was. And the expenditure side, 1.2 were our actual expenditures, which compare very closely to the budget. And overall, this fund did see a slight deficit in operations of 147,000, $140,000. Off of the balance sheet, this translates to a fund balance of about $690,000. Our reserves total, 475,000 are made mainly of a capital reserve, 464,000, and a small debt service reserve of about $900,000. And that's 57% of the maximum annual debt service that is supported by this fund. I should say that operations benefited from controlling costs of heat services, fertilizer, fuel, and our repairs. And that pretty much is the focus of the audit. There certainly are other funds in here, including the downtown cement improvement funds, this special revenue fund, and our capital projects, trust me, and the master and wide boards. One thing I do want to say here, certainly, and to any questions, is that we should look at this as a good story, but just rest caution in that it's having the unassigned fund balance that we do see in the general fund, building up our reserves, is the beginning of a way to create a long-term fiscal health. And continued improvement management of our expenses, much like we achieved in 2012, as well as maximizing the revenue potential we have, is what will make this the beginning of a very good story. But it is a beginning, and a caution that is taken in that way. Questions, like if you want the management letter, people would like to go through that or?
Is that the question on the water and sewer fund transfers? Do we have a motion for this transfer to the state?
Which? Water and sewer transfers? You mean the bank paying back the 2004 loan?
Transfers from the general fund.
Oh, where the city has certain revenues created. When the budgets are put together, there is a process that is undertaken to see what the total needs of the city are, and then what each of the ancillary, for lack of a better term, each of the supporting funds, how they are contributing. And that, whoop that as a whole, when you're setting up your total targets, or whatever you want your tasks to be, and your needs to be. I was here during the development of the 2012 budget, so I can't tell you what specific detail we have, but I can tell you from the perspective that I think this, we're looking at this as we look at the overall needs of the city. And if there are some areas that may contribute to others, that we will do that. But it will be based on actually the need and real.
I was under the impression that water and sewer is supposed to be basically the water and sewer, all of them the support services for that fund. Can you translate it to English?
Well, water and sewer does have support.
Does that support their feet?
Yes, exactly. It supports its own operations. But water and sewer is part of the city, the city general fund is the main fund that supports all the operations. Does someone have any other questions? Tony or Jim, I'm listening.
I mean, like I said, I was under the impression that the money that's transferred from the general fund is only supposed to be support services like payroll, things like that. I was wondering if we had documentation for this amount that was transferred, you know, to show that it's specified.
I understand what you're saying. I would have to defer to when the 2012 project was adopted. It was adopted, it should have been adopted based on whatever analysis was done at that time. I can't personally speak to that. I can go look through the files and see if it was part of the budget adoption. But that would be.
That would make sure one's battery.
The only thing I'm looking for is the justification for that's on, for those transfers. What are they supporting?
Well, they, I didn't mean to step on you. The transfers were as budgeted. So I guess the answer to that, and I apologize if I didn't get your question at first, the answer to that is whatever the analysis was that was presented to city council at the time of the 2012 budget.
I was not the city council at that time, that's why I'm asking this.
And I can't personally answer your question for the same reason, I wasn't part of the process, but I can see what we can do.
It seems like an extraordinary amount of money for the support service, to me, in my opinion. If you can come up with some documentation, I'd love to see it.
I'll see what I can find. So if I can move on to the management letter? So basically, what you see in our management letter this year, and you see in any management letter if one is received, is the auditor details what findings there were in the past audit, and what the status of them are during the auditor's visit to the city. And anything that was raised by virtually 2011 audit was viewed as being addressed, and the status is completed and closed statistically. There are actually just a few items that were raised in this year's audit. Two of them include comments regarding what I want to call stale transactions, old uncashed checks that the auditor noticed when going through the audit. And one of the things that we have recognized, and that Tony and I are undertaking, is looking at our cash management policies. And one of the things that we're going to be doing, and have started to do, is set up some routine checkpoints for us to look at our various accounts, and make sure if we've got any stale transactions in there, checks that aren't cashed, receivables, whatever it may be, that it goes through a process where we decide how best to move forward, and in the case of uncashed checks, close those out. So that is the response that's recommended in the audit for those two, or in the management letter for those two pieces. The auditor also commented on the processing, the city's processing of certain overtime payments. And we went into quite detail on this, and for me, it was a very good learning experience, in that I am comfortable telling you is that we have very good controls over the payment of overtime. And that overtime payments do not go out of this building without there being sufficient supervisory and senior staff approval. We do recognize that it would be prudent to occasionally have a post-audit of overtime transactions, to be sure that those controls that we have in place are consistently being met, and we're going to implement that with our payroll department. And lastly, and this is an issue that has been maybe not raised in the management letter, but it's something that the city, as well as many other municipalities, is in the same situation, is that the need to consider tracking and depreciating fixed assets. Now, this is a, the auditor recognizes, and the city certainly concurs, that this is a heavy lift, for lack of a better term, a heavy lift from the perspective of personnel time and financial commitment. But we will, as we put together and contemplate our 2014 budget, see what types of steps maybe we can start to take to build up to compliance with that suggestion. So with that, I went through the points that I was hoping to raise, and happy to answer any question, or Tony can walk you through the single audit, if you'd like a presentation of the single audit.
Would you like a question?
Sure.
Our pension payment, did we make it in December this year, 2012, or did we defer that?
We made our retirement payments as planned, and we did, what happened, we made them all on time. We did not, right. Last year, we actually paid one early. That is not the case. We paid them all in a timely manner as budgeted. Would you like, would you like coming to walk you through the single audit, or what is? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nice job, David. Thank you.
Counsel, has everybody got a signature?
As you know, for circular A 133, any entity that expends $300,000 or more in federal assistance is subject to a federal audit. Well, as you can see on page eight, the city is connected, we have expended $9.5 million of federal funds.
Page eight?
Page eight.
Okay.
In the single audit. And the breakdown, as you can see, the breakdown of federal revenues that the city is connected by funds.
Do we have an extra copy?
Yes, I do. I have an extra copy. And you need another one more? And the breakdown of the federal awards in the city's connected, was a general fund, as you can see, is 645,000. And that consisted of, you know, the COPS grant reimbursements from DEA and the US Marshals. The capital projects, you see the amount of 3.2 million. And that is all from the Erie Boulevard construction project that we have going on right now. The special grant funds is 5.47 million. And that special grants, this consists of the CDVG projects, the home projects, emergency shelter grant projects, Shelter Plus Care, lead, the lead-free program, Homeless Security, and money from Irene from FEMA. And the last fund that we used federal monies for is from the trust and agency, and that was from the Equo Share. And that's, that's, the Equo Share program is a program where the police, where when they confiscate goods and money, they all bundle together, and then the DEA shares it with the surrounding counties. And that's where those funds came from. Now, this increase, this 9.5 million is an increase from 2011 amount of $6 million, but this was primarily due to the Erie Boulevard construction project, where we did come in with $3.2 million. Now, if you look on page six, you can see where most of our expenditures and funds, where they're being used and spent from. 45% or $4.3 million of federal assistance came from US Department of HUD. That's $2 million from CDVG, a million from the home, the lead reduction program was $883,000, $195,000 for Shelter Plus Care, $152,000 for Mercy Shelter Grant, and $92,000 for the homeless prevention. That's the Rattory House that we do through SCAP. 34% or $3.2 million came from the US Department of Transportation, and again, that's for the Erie Boulevard construction project. 9% from the US Department of Justice amounted to $873,000. That came from the COPS rehiring program, which this is the last year of the program. The Equo Sharing, $176,000, $32,000 from US Marshal, and $50,000 from the DEA and other police agencies. The other 9% of $868,000 was from, through FEMA for the Irene storm. That's a reimbursement of, you know, a lot of the city work that the city has provided for that storm, which actually we're still doing work on it. 2% or $122,000 came from Homeland Security. And that deals directly with the police supplying us with, you know, new and modern equipment and techniques in communication and photography, and a lot of the cameras that you see around the city right now, and for camera monitors also. And the last percent, $99,000, we got through the US EPA for the clean diesel program. And that's a program that we're using for our bureau service trucks to help, not only for better gas mileage, but also to clean emissions for those trucks, diesel trucks. And as you say, the single audit, the objective is to provide assurance to the US government as to the management of use and use of such funds. And as you can see on page four, opinion of the auditors, the city is connected, has complied with all material respects with the requirements that could have a direct material effect on each of the federal program for 2012. And there were no findings in any of the federal programs. So we had a very clean, and we're very happy with the audit, and the use of our federal funds that are helping us do some projects. Do you have any questions? Yes, Mary.
And which one, did you say this was the last year for that grant?
The COPS rehiring program. Any other questions?
Just good work, Tom. The people that oversee these grants have such a nice, clean audit.
Thank you very much. All set?
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Next one up, authorize finance deposit chip funding. So as we remember from last year after the audit, we've all had a chance to look over the documents that have gone along. If you have any more questions, we would then approve acceptance of the audit.
I'll move that.
Is there a?
No, I would second that. Great job this year.
Excellent.
Finance, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Next one up, now we have chip funding.
Evening. How are you? Good. Well, this is just to approve the receipt of funding of chips funding, consolidated highway improvement program, state funding that we get annually from New York State. This year's amount was actually increased approximately $200,000 from roughly $940,000 to what you see here, $1.178 million. This is just to accept the funding so that finance can set up a code so that we may use this code and budget for future for the paving program, which is further down the agenda.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question about the rollover funds. Where do they get budgeted? Is that like something separate? Because I noticed in the letter that we have some rollover funds coming to us as well.
Rollover funds? Oh, are you talking about in the letter?
Yes.
Yes, in the letter, what it is, is actually, I can explain it to you more in the paving when we get down to it.
Okay.
I have a sheet here that we can speak about it, but what it is, is that we don't necessarily use 100% of our funds every year. Sometimes, like you will see on here, we actually have thousands left because it's kind of hard and some of the funds just remain open and like last year's fund, we left around $300,000 because some of it came in over budget and some we just like to have that little bit of a safety factor so we have it continue. And that's what they were spurring with rollover funds is that they take those, I believe it's-
$324,000?
Ten, yeah, they take 2010, 11 and 12 and they sum those three years up and they get to that total.
But we're not going to lose those-
No, we don't lose them, no. That money, we're actually, so for this year, we're going to start and we're going to close those funds out with our paving program first and then we're going to start taking down on the 1.1 million that's here. That's just something that we do. We're not trying to have that many funds open though, that's just kind of a pain for finance to have four in.
Right. Well, I know we, paving is always really needed, so-
Yes.
Is there, I mean, do we leave those funds there, like if something terrible happens and we need, or is there-
Yeah, more or less, you know, we, when we do our estimate, like I spoke about with our email that was a couple of weeks ago, you know, we do an estimate, we put in there a significantly large contingency factor to account for increases in the cost of asphalt, labor, materials, and those costs, sometimes like this year, there was a very competitive bid. All of our bids came in extremely close and very low compared to what our estimate was and we saved. We did the same thing last year, we saved money. And then we don't necessarily go right back out and put out an addendum to add more streets. When we get to a number, typically in the past, what they'd like to see is right around a 200 to 300 range to come over for the next year to roll. We don't like to go over that because then that's just kind of a little egregious to have that much more, but we typically keep that amount for the last, God, probably 10 paving years. We've always had that balance. We never take it down to zero.
Okay. Thank you.
But we can discuss that more when we get to the paving program. I can go over that with you. But this is for the acceptance of this year's funding.
Okay, so, motion to accept funding, is another question?
I'll second it.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Acceptance of funding. Anything else before, finance? Motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Roger.
All right, I call to order city development and planning and I'm just taking one item out of order. The mayor has another pressing commitment, so I'm going to take number eight, the Section 108 loan guarantee proposal first. Mr. Mayor.
And it's, you have the demolition work looking to apply to HUD for what is referred to as a Section 108 loan, the amount of $3 million. Looking to, you know, we've talked about demolition is the goal of that undertaking. HUD doesn't like you to just knock buildings down. They want to see other plan and other activity. This is outlining a million six sixty for demolition, put in there a million three for rehab of the Knott Street, old social services building, and the money that was requested before for the community loan fund. That community loan fund really, even though they talked about doing everything in one year, my belief is that we have to approach that probably over a 24-month period. If everybody's good intentions, things just don't happen quite as quick as we would like. But this will start, I'm going to start the application process to get this in to HUD. This is also, Council has referenced, a line of credit, so that we use the full $3 million to outline that's what the payments would be. If we could use less money, then we would only borrow what we actually have to borrow. We had the law department start to look at some of these distressed properties that were looking to demolish and some of them, I would like to go back after the current property owner, or in some cases, the prior property owner, to try and recover some money from that. It's a tough undertaking, can't guarantee anything, but I want the message just to be out there that we're being left with these problems that people created and they made money on these properties. They stopped investing in it, they walked away from them and we're left, they clean it up and the neighborhoods have less value because of this urban void. And by doing this demolition, continuing our aggressive homes program to sell property, some of the other economic activities there, you know, getting that message, we're Schenectady's a community we want people to look at and to consider for possible homeownership.
Ms. Porterfield.
Could you just talk a little bit more about the conversion of 47 Knott Street? That's the old-
Social services building, there's a couple, so we have some people here, there's a few questions might, and address.
Jerry Henigan's here from Gillespie, can you address that?
A old building, I forget when that was built, 18-
1908.
1908, a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
It is a, it's a fortress. To knock it down, it costs a huge amount of money. To rehab it, it costs a huge amount of money because of the large amount of asbestos and lead paint that are in it. And so there's no scenario where it is easy and they've gone through a number of different options, in fact, they're still reviewing some, just to do that building in its current footprint, possibly modifying it and expanding so that they can put a little bit more space on it that might reduce the overall per-unit construction costs. It's somewhat of a dynamic review that's undergoing now, they're working their staff, the city staff, to trying to come up with what would be the best scenario. I don't know if I answered your question.
So, I mean, so it's just going to be converted into rental units and it's clear, it says here that 51% of the L and M, low and moderate income?
Correct.
Any, any other questions? Mr. Riggi?
Along the same lines, which I told you my concerns about the Knott Street building we spoke last week, Mary. I'm still kind of at a loss why we were going to abate that building and then turn it over to a developer to develop or load and model make of housing. It seems to me like it's kind of in direct conflict with their homes program. We have a lot of loaded modernized housing in the City of Schenectady and why are we to put a million three or six into this to abate it and then turn it over to a developer? I'm kind of lost on this.
We don't own it, the developer has the property now, so we're not turning it over. This is a proposal to-
That's even more glaring than if that's the case.
In the public sector.
Why are we putting money into it to abate the lead and asbestos?
Because that's what we do with the lead remediation program the city does, it's what homes, homes are used for, is to take these properties that the numbers don't work on and trying to convert them into useful, productive projects. And yes, the numbers are bad, but the building is there, it's an old building and our messages that we want to send out is we don't walk away from problems, we don't pretend they're there, we're trying to do something in every neighborhood as we go through and, in the general message, we're trying to improve homeownership.
This is also consistent with our 2020 comprehensive plan and also our five-year consolidated plan.
Mary, Ms. Porterfield? Yes, sir.
I can have him go through the more detailed, pro forma with you so that you look at the numbers and everybody's trying to get them down. It's just unfortunate that the condition that building is in, we can just let it sit there or put the money in, fix it up and then move on to the next block.
Okay, Ms. Porterfield first and then Mr. Erickson.
Okay, since, since we're going to be using public dollars for this, will there, are we going to be entering into a community benefits agreement so that we make sure that folks get, are employed, you know, are included in the process since we're going to be using such a large number of money and that has that been a consideration?
That particular component of this loan application is not, do that on a general basis in terms of power.
So it's not in the application?
It's not part of this loan application.
Right. When we enter into an agreement with Gillespie, it'll have the same standards that the other HUD programs have in like Section Three requirements, so that'll be in the contract, but we're not at that stage yet.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Erickson?
I mean, right now, the way I understand, this is a, a general plan, right? So before we move forward with, you know, making this a definite plan, there's opportunity for modification or just lock us into this exact number with this exact-
Again, this is a line of credit so that we'd like to use the least amount of money we have to, but if it is becoming, we like the demolition, we will spec that out, law forbids, I don't have to go back for council approval for the demolition as we work with the community loan fund, give work in conjunction with the council to try and encourage those small business entities where they cut out that specialty, where they identify and support it and structure the financing that allows them to succeed.
I guess my question is, does this application lock us into this building or does it open us to the option of if next week, another opportunity feels a better opportunity, a better investment?
This, this proposal says that, Bill. I will call that a dynamic review that's ongoing now so that, again, every time you look at those numbers, if someone wants a better scenario, of course, want to look at it, that building is very expensive, you know, are the scenarios where, you know, the numbers just don't work, that's possible. So then, you know, we have to approach it in a realistic manner, Gillespie's been very flexible in terms of, if we've got somebody else that can develop that building, they would be more than happy to work with another developer to handle it. At this point, there's nobody that's coming to the table to look at it or trying to work out this narrative. Is it just the numbers don't work and that's on a high-level public subsidy?
Ms. Ricker?
You know, I would just point out too, that it's probably, this proposal and certainly something for the council and all the rest of us to consider is that would probably be the first time in, since 1908, that this building has been on the tax rolls. And it would bring in a considerable amount of revenue to the city being privately owned as opposed to being owned by another entity, owned by a union, owned by a lot of other folks that were, you know, considering this building and the cost being so extremely high for the lead and asbestos abatement that would just, I don't think it figures would make sense, so I think the fact that it will go back on our tax rolls is significant.
There isn't a pilot program now? I don't know if there is or not. There is with the DSS. The new DSS, the new old DSS, or the old new DSS.
Yes, there is.
Will there be a pilot on this building and all said and done?
We haven't discussed that.
It's a possibility.
My preference would be to stay away from pilots only because now under the formula put out by the state, entering into pilot agreements actually hurt us in terms of our calculation for tax levying. But again, that hasn't been finalized and back to the council or anything we entered into.
Any other questions? Mr. Perga, anything you wanted to add?
You also have an attached schedule.
Yeah.
I can quickly go over that if you'd like. We would like authorization from you on, I guess it's the May 29th meeting now, it's been changed.
Right.
To apply, what we have to do, we have to amend our current consolidated plan, which is the 2012 consolidated plan. We have to amend that to include this Section 108 amount, to include the $3 million. May 31st, there should be a notice in the, display notice in the Gazette saying that the application is available online at cityofschenectady.com. Also, we'll distribute this to the people where we always distribute our consolidated plan, to the clerk's office in my department, Carver Community Center, the Municipal Housing Authority, and also the library, so there'll be copies available there.
I understand why, what are we advertising for people to do? Apply or-
No, no, it's not, it's not to apply, it's, it's just a notice that there is an application. The city's making an application and a copy of that application will be on the cityofschenectady.com.
Okay.
You know, so people can look at the application. There's a 30-day comment period that is required and that would be from June 1st through June 30th. There's also a required public hearing and we're proposing to have that June 24th, which would be a regularly scheduled city council meeting. And then July 1st, all that being done, we could actually submit a Section 108 loan guarantee application to the Buffalo Office of Housing and Urban Development. They review it, they have a checklist they go over, they want to make sure it's complete and upon completion, they forward that to the Central Office in Washington for approval. And I'm assuming that'll probably take approximately months.
I have another question.
Sure.
So, we have a public hearing?
Yes.
And is there another vote as a public hearing or we're voting now?
We're voting now.
Yeah, yeah, you're voting, you will be voting at the next council meeting-
Right.
-to authorize us to-
We're just moving out of committee.
To apply, the public meeting, or the public hearing is for public comment.
For public comment, correct.
And then, regardless of the public comment is, is there a vote again after that? Usually there's a, usually they have a public hearing and then, then that guides us on our voting, right?
I mean, it's a, maybe, I guess we need, I guess we need, what I'm saying is, we need approval to go ahead with this application.
Yeah.
And then, you're right, there would be-
A vote to accept it, right?
Right.
Okay.
That's correct.
All right.
That's, no, you're right.
Trying to watch the steps, you know-
That's right, so it would be in one more cycle.
Okay, so we'll have another, another vote to accept it.
Correct.
And, of course, before we spend any of it, we'd have to-
Correct.
Right. Anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion then to authorize an amendment to the 2012-
The New York State Legislature approved land banking in February of 2011, and Steve Strickman and several of us were interested, solicited responses from other municipalities in our seven-county region, and at the end of the day, we put in an application for a land bank, and we rejoined, the County of Schenectady, City of Schenectady, City of Amsterdam, joined in an application, and we were successful, we got one of the five initial land banks that were granted out of the 10 that will be granted and were allowed by the law. Just as, fill in, if you remember, the other four were Buffalo and Erie County, Syracuse and Anadaga County, Chautauqua County, and the City of Newburgh, so they were pretty well spread out. And a follow-up to that, there have been three more awarded on 2013, and that is Broom County, the City of Rochester, and Suffolk County. So there are eight in the state now, and there'll be two more in next year's go-round. So as we became, we came into being, if you will, in March of 2012, we had our first board meeting, and we have Kathy Rooney, Jeff McDonald are on the board, along with Rich Russo, who's here tonight, he's our treasurer, Joe Berlin from the city is our secretary, Bob Martin and Bob DiCaprio are the Amsterdam representatives, Bob DiCaprio is our vice chair, and I'm Bob Wofford, and I'm the chair, I got elected chair. So we are a quasi-municipal entity authorized by the not-for-profit law, it's a whole separate section in the New York State law that allows land banks, and as such, we had to jump through all the hoops to become an active entity, so it's taken us better part of a year to pass the 13 different items that were required, the different policy statements, bylaws, et cetera, et cetera. All of our board members had to take the New York State training, and we've filed an application with the IRS for 501(c)(3), a lot of paperwork, helped along by, you know, John Polster and some of the staff here at City Hall. We have an intergovernmental agreement entered into between Amsterdam, City and County of Schenectady, where everyone has agreed how things are going to work for the first two years, and then after that, we're going to see where we are and move forward. We are meeting tomorrow with representatives from the city and county of Albany, there's been a lot of noise over there that they would like to join us, and so we're going to meet tomorrow and see how real their interest is and work out the logistics if they want to join us, how that would happen. Any municipality that joins us is entitled to two seats on the board. You know, we've accomplished a lot, so we're not going to take someone joining us lightly, but then again, Albany has a lot to offer in terms of funding and resource. So our first year, we spent a lot of time getting organized. Rich Russo, myself, and Steve Strickman went to Kalamazoo, Michigan to a three-day conference of land bankers. Land banking has been going on for 20, 30 years in the United States, and it's been very popular in Michigan the last 12 years. So several land banks out there, the most successful of which is Flint, and they're kind of the poster boy for land banks now, they own a hotel, and they've returned $21 million to the tax rolls in the last 12 years out there. So that's kind of the goal that we have. So one of the things we had to do was each municipality was required to establish a disposition committee, so Amsterdam established one, the county established one, and the city established one. And each disposition committee met, and some of the members of the committee are in the room, and we explained what the land bank was and what we intend to do, and they helped us come up with a disposition policy, which we took the best of everybody's suggestions and made it into a disposition policy. And those committees are in place in each city. So what we intend to do, and it's a good segue from what our mayor was talking about before, land banks are, you know, our mission is to help with revitalization of neighborhoods. We have the ability to do a lot of things that I'll call regular not-for-profits can't do. The best thing that we can do is we can bank land, thus the name, we can hold land off to tax rolls, and we can enter into agreements with developers, private owners, and even become part of a commercial project, and we can put conditions on it, and we can keep the property, and if the conditions are not fulfilled, we can retain the property. What we're trying to do is stop the recidivism of some of these properties that keep coming back because they're sold and taxes are not paid, and they come back, and they come back. We hope in the near future to embark on our first project. Right now, we don't own anything yet, we're just getting going. We are going out and meeting with the neighborhoods, we've come up with some flyers, brochures, and we've started to meet with neighborhood associations so we can touch base with the folks in the neighborhoods so they can help us identify properties that we may not know, the city may not know, are either owned by someone who's personally in distress but not necessarily on our radar in terms of tax foreclosure or even mortgage foreclosure. The, we're going to focus on demolition, thankfully, the city's going to focus on that too, and hopefully, we can be a partner in that, if we can identify some properties that maybe personally we can bring in. We have already been contacted by lenders that have their REO property, their property they've taken back from foreclosures, and they find it advantageous to donate property to land banks. We recently, in our meeting last week, voted to accept a property in the City of Schenectady. Our council is looking over the paperwork as we speak, I hope, and we're going to get back to that lender, and hopefully, we're going to have a piece of property by July. So what I'd like to do at this point, I told you where, what we did last year, we're all ready to go, we're in place, we're going to open bank accounts, and I want to have Steve, have you give us some idea of the different projects that we hope to enter into. I'll give you the chair.
You've hit on a lot of them, I can stand.
Yeah, okay.
I guess I would just add, we are working with different neighborhood groups and not-for-profits to develop some reutilization of vacant land, either tree nurseries or urban farms, that's one of the things we're looking at doing right now. We have the ability, as Bob mentioned, to work with developers and probably to work with the mayor with the North Side Initiative where the land bank can own the property, and if it costs more to fix it up, then, if it costs more to fix up than it's worth, the land bank can come in and be able to, and through some creative financing, put in the additional amount you need to fix up the property and then recruit that over years with a tax, it's kind of like a pilot basically, that will come back to the land bank. So we would need a revolving loan fund first, but then we could help basically incentivize these programs that otherwise aren't going to get people in there to develop them. And again, one of the things we were looking at was demolition, but with this, one of, with the loan guarantee, the city will be taking the lead on that for the first couple of years, which actually is good because when the land bank was created, it did not come with any funding, so it was going to be a slow build to be able to take some properties, sell the ones in the good areas, and be able to use that money for demolition in other areas. I think, as Bob mentioned, we went to Kalamazoo at our own expense, and I think that was good, we made a lot of good contacts, and that's where we actually met the bank that is giving this first foreclosure back to us. So again, we are just getting started moving right now, I think this is a real valuable tool that the city will be able to use, and we will have a bit more to report back on this year.
Mention more of the other land banks?
Well, we do have, there is a group of five land banks, now eight, and we are meeting by phone or conferences a couple times a year to talk about shared policies, purchasing for different software that we may need, basically trying to reduce our costs and work with the other land banks.
Mr. Erickson?
Bob, you mentioned, you know, going to each neighborhood group and talking to people. We know some of the abandoned houses are city foreclosed properties, and you mentioned, you know, individuals that might be in distress or soon to be in distress. Is there any plan for the land bank to actually go to the individual in distress and buy up the property, or go to a bank and buy the property, or did I miss hearing?
No, we certainly can do that. Right now, we have many, many creative ways that we can either get property, develop property. What we're trying to do, we're going to focus on two things, we're going to focus on individual lots, and perhaps approach the owner next door, they may want to do a side lot program, we're going to try to invest the neighborhood and maybe have them jointly take over this lot, and we'll help them clean it up if we have to take down a building or do some cleanup and have it become sort of maybe a community guard, maybe we can get one or two or three of them next to each other and help reach Schenectady, have a local tree nursery, there's lots of different things we can do. And then there are several neighborhoods where there's a combination, I'll use Eastern Avenue for example, of commercial and residential, kind of spottin' up and down the street, and, you know, so we've already talked to Metroplex about partnering with them in those kinds of situations, that maybe, you know, there may be one house ATF owns, and maybe one we own, the city owns, there may be, you know, different ownership in a certain area, and if we do our homework, we can try to get all those parties together and say, hey, if we all get together, there's seven out of 11 houses in this home block that we can control, and if we can take down the bad ones and create a new entrance to Vale Cemetery or Vale Park or something like that, we can pull the whole neighborhood up. So those are the kind of things that we're hoping to be able to do. Everyone that's on the land bank board and everybody on the disposition committee has been kind of reinvigorated as we go through the city, we're taking another look at what's out there and what's available. Steve has provided us with, you know, some maps with some coloring as to what's owned, what's in distress, what's ATF, what's the city. We've consulted with Jim Foley, who's an empirical data guy, who's kind of up in the satellite area, and he's given us information about, you know, how much cities like ours can improve the value of houses within one home, two home, three home of vacant lots and burned-out buildings, and so we're trying to use all this knowledge to approach the neighbors and show them that there are ways that they can help their own neighborhood. And we're hoping to do it kind of in a refreshing way, we're not the city, we're not, you know, some of the things they've read and heard about for a long time that they may be a little skeptical about, so we're going to try to come out and breathe some fresh air into this revitalization and hope to have, you know, have the neighbors, we met with Eastern Avenue, they were very receptive, so we're going to have referral forms where they're going to give us information about property that, like I said, we may not know about. I mean, in my practice, I run across this often, you know, homes where all of a sudden, you know, everyone who's owned it dies, and the grandson's in San Francisco and, quite frankly, could give a hoot, and, you know, something like that could become available, you know, as a donation to the land bank, and, you know, we hope to get good properties, bad properties, we want to, you know, we want to be in the land business, and our vision is a long-range vision. We know we're not going to, you know, hit any home runs the first couple of years, but we're going to try to get our base and, you know, eventually be another tool in the revitalization machine.
Any other questions, Mrs. Perk?
Bob, is there a plan for properties that, residential properties that are recently in foreclosure, yet the bank that has foreclosed on them is remote, the bank might be in Rochester, it might be in Syracuse, so again, talking about not giving a hoot, it's a little bit distance-wise, not really important to them, so do you see there being a way even to work with these other land banks that may have access to these banks that are more in their area, in the Syracuse and Rochester areas, or just remote banks that have given loans to properties in the City of Schenectady that have been foreclosed on, nobody cares about, and they're just?
One of the things that.
Destroying the neighborhood and property values.
Yeah, we're restricted to our governmental units, so, you know, we can only operate in City of Amsterdam, County of Schenectady right now.
I guess, I guess what I'm asking, and maybe I, word, is there a mechanism in place or will there be a mechanism in place not just to deal with the property previous owners that were closed on because in a sense they're not really the owner anymore? What is the plan to go after banks that own these properties that are not local to the City of Schenectady or the county?
That's one of the things we accomplished when we went to Kalamazoo, all of those banks were there, and we went to a lot of meetings after the meetings, they call them cocktail parties, but we went anyway, and, you know, made connections with people, and we got contacted right away by several banks trying to give us property in counties that we weren't in. So we referred them around the state, and there's many, many counties that don't have a land bank, but some of these banks are looking for different ways to rid themselves of these REO properties, and quite frankly, land bank, the land bank initiative as it developed and passed in 2011 was pretty much a direct result of the foreclosure crisis because it got everyone's attention. Land banks were passed by the legislature back in 2008, but Governor Patterson at the time vetoed it because he thought they'd all want funding, and there wasn't any funds, so they said, no, let's push it aside, but then when the foreclosure crisis became so acute, they did pass it, and it's, I think in Buffalo and in Syracuse, they're working with the banks a lot closer than we are because it's a lot bigger issue. I think Buffalo has 10,000 properties already in their land bank, something like that, I mean, they're cranking out there, but they have a lot bigger area and a lot bigger problems, same problem, bigger scope there. But I think the answer to your question is, the more we get out and talk to the Wells Fargos and the Chases and, you know, M&amp;T, and, you know, they talk to each other, and, you know, if they, you know, go to their conferences and they find out there's a land bank in the capital district that they can donate to, and they'll not only give you the property, they'll give you some seed money with it, and it moves it off of their books, and I don't understand banking as well as that and probably some of the others, but they, they love deadlines, they love to get rid of things, and when they move them and give money, it's a plus for them in their books, and it looks real good for them, so we're trying to tap into that, we definitely are.
Are land banks, is it restricted by census tract or anything like that, or by zip code?
No, our land bank operates.
The entire City of Schenectady?
No, that's one of the benefits, we're going to team with the other not-for-profits that are doing, you know, the good work in the city, like Better Neighborhoods and Community Land Trust and Habitat, we hope to team, because we don't want to reinvent the wheel, we want to take all the wheels that are already rolling and just be another wheel, another part of that machine, so we're hoping to, you know, tap all that information and all that expertise that's already out there, and like you said, try to maybe breed a little more interest in it and help move it along. So, you know, we're going to give you, this is our first year, this is everything from our application right up to our minutes and all our, and our policies, everything's on the city's website, everything's housed there, all our minutes, everything, we're required to have everything we do, required to have an inventory, everything we own has to be up on our website within seven days or it's void, that's what the law says. So we're very tuned in to our requirements, so much so that it took us a year to meet them in order to actually get rolling. So any other questions? We'll be reporting to you every year.
I would just make a comment, Bob, even on his own time last week, gave a talk to approximately 150 local, mostly local attorneys from both sides of the coin. One, somebody's got an estate where there's a piece of property that nobody's interested in, like you mentioned, the place local that owned it died and the rest of the people are out, but made them aware of that, but also made them aware of options with taking property from the land bank in conjunction with some program. So I know that they're going above and beyond in the efforts to promote.
Good. Yes, thank you.
You all know how to get ahold of us if you have any questions, so thanks for your time.
Can we distribute brochures?
Yeah, we'll leave them here, you guys can.
Thanks.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you. All right, halfway houses, Mr. Strickman and Mr. Polster.
Actually, I'll probably do most of the talking on that. You have a copy of the proposed legislation that you're packing, and I'm going to take responsibility for drafting most of it, Steve has some input, but in light of the comments that were made last week at the public hearing, I would back to read it again.
You have a copy of the proposed legislation that you're packing. And I'm going to take responsibility for drafting most of it. Steve has some input. But in light of the comments that were made last week at the public hearing, I went back to read it again. And the definition, and this is clearly my fault, but the definition for a halfway house for purposes of this section is defined as any facility for the housing rehabilitation and/or training of persons on cremation parole, et cetera, et cetera. And I did a fair amount of research with respect to how many municipalities are handling the issue. And when I drafted that, I was envisioning a program that has its purpose as dealing with this particular group of people. And the comments that were made last week opened up another avenue of thinking for me. If you've got X, Y, Z program that for whatever reason attracts 5, 10, 15 people that fit into these categories, does it apply to them? And right now, I think it could. And I am, the bottom line is, I want to move this for two weeks and clarify the legislation. But within that two-week time period, I would very much like to have any input that any of you have, send me an email as to whether it should apply, whether it shouldn't apply. If you've got a program that is not designed to deal with this group of people, but yet it's attracted 5% or 10% or 50% or five people, three people, should it apply? And I want to do some more research. I was out today last week with trainings and seminars. And so I need, I would like some input as to what we want. And I'm going to be doing some research on what other municipalities have done. So that's the issue that I want to make sure is resolved by the legislation.
Okay, good. Ms. Prazo.
Currently, we have a moratorium on halfway houses, is that correct? I remember that.
It has expired.
It has expired.
So I don't want to delay this. I want to do it quickly. I don't think two weeks is going to make a difference. Is there anything in the pipeline?
No.
So.
And just for clarification, so that I understand, is there a reason we wouldn't just renew that moratorium on halfway houses?
Because?
I had a call from a concerned constituent that there may be a transaction happening with the old Charlie Mills Center and showing concern for, you know, adding a halfway house to that area, which I would be concerned with too. And I don't know why we wouldn't continue with the moratorium. We're put in place for really good reasons.
After looking at it, I could make a very strong argument that if there is a program in place, using the language as it sits right now, or is drafted right now, that the program, facility, whatever, does not need to be designed to handle this group of people to fall within the operations of this section. And that if it attracts the people, because it brings in five people and happens to be on a collision, okay, we're now in this. How do you make that argument? And Steve has indicated that that's the way he was interpreting my language. I believe that that's an accurate statement. I, if you wanted it to be this way, you could approve it this way or give me some more time to clarify.
I know, I would like to just give you more time, particularly since we're not dealing with a pressing issue because that way it can be more comprehensive and, you know, better.
You want to extend the moratorium? If you do, I could have, you could hold that out maybe tonight and I could have a resolution to extend the moratorium for 90 days, spread for you.
Yeah, I mean, I haven't talked to any of my colleagues about this, so I don't know how anyone feels about it. But I just feel like, you know, the situation that put the moratorium in place to begin with was a really solid situation and there was, you know, I don't know why we would put ourselves in a position of being open to that again.
Mr. Riggi.
Yeah, just a clarification of the speakers last week. Now, I mean, I think you made a statement either in the paper or something that they wouldn't come under this, but now you think that they may.
You know, that was my, when I drafted it, that was what I had in my head. And I apologize, I probably jumped at the gun when I made that statement. I went back and reread what I wrote and I said, it's kind of vague on that issue. And even though when I was drafting it, that was what I was contemplating. But now that I reread it, playing devil's advocate, I can make a very strong argument that it would apply. And so I don't think it's fair to the city to have the legislation allow this right. I would prefer to present to you a recommendation with respect to what would be appropriate and then even say A and A, it should be this, it should be that, but I don't like vague legislation. And that is that.
Okay, so Ms. Porterfield?
Well, I agree that we should continue the moratorium. I mean, I was part of the group that came out about the halfway houses because they all seem to go in one area. I do have a question regarding what you put before us tonight where you talked about how it impacts the goals of the comprehensive plan. Can you speak for that a little bit more? Or do you want to include that in your clarification in two weeks?
I'll only put that in the clarification with respect to, because I did not reread this. In the end, I'm counting on the plan in mind, so I'll put that in two weeks. But what I will do is I'll have a resolution in my mind now that this is in front of you, 90 days for continuation of the moratorium. Is that?
So, I mean, is everybody comfortable with that? I kind of just threw it out there, but I think.
90 days is going to be enough to make the change, discuss it, lead it back and forth for a couple of cycles in case we disagree and then tell a booth or run down.
So we can always extend it again, right? Let's start with 90 days.
Okay.
All right, so do I need to make a motion to do that? All right, so I make a motion that we extend the moratorium on halfway houses that is in place for another 90 days.
Okay, second, Ms. Porterfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good.
I'd just ask one question. When does expire 90 days from expiration? It might be tomorrow or whatever.
Well, it's kind of due in 90 days.
Today, right.
No, Wednesday.
Would that leave a gap of an opening to the respect?
But I don't think it applies.
All right, sale of 446 Brandywine, Mr. Strickman.
Okay, the next three, I guess I have good news is for you tonight is that these three were probably going to have to defer for three, for two weeks because the Sura meeting was not held. And I apologize for that. The backup information went out. I don't know why it didn't get forwarded. I think it was called the wrong thing in the memo. So it didn't get forwarded out. So we're going to have to hold that for two weeks, basically. All three of these, we discussed in executive session, Crane Street and Brandywine two weeks ago, selling them. They're not city-owned, they are Sura-owned. So Sura would have to authorize the sale to the city and the city would have to sell them. 1108 was a previously approved sale by the city and that would be just changing it again, accepting it from Sura is all we have to do in that case.
Well, we wanted, just to be sure, we were running the bay from Sura back to the city and then had the city.
All three of them. All three of them would go from.
And if you wouldn't mind, you know, if we did this, you're right, I tried to call talking about these, but if you wanted to just hold a quick meeting next Wednesday before the regular city council meeting, we take two minutes, we pass the resolution and then.
Yeah, I mean, if we do that, then we have, we're not the way to hold a cycle. Should we pass these, should we pass these in advance of the Sura meeting or?
In anticipation of?
If you're comfortable with it, you haven't seen, I mean, we've talked about two of them, you haven't seen anything on Albany Street yet. We'd have to talk about all three of them next Wednesday. You'd have to probably adjourn CDP until next Wednesday.
Right, but I think we'll have time because we're going to, you know, pass it on a committee. We're going to have a Sura meeting, review everything before then, before we go back to council to add the vote anyways, I think we might maybe have time, but I don't want to hold up the process of collective properties any longer than that.
So I was going to ask if it's going.
So would you want to be about probably a 10 or 15 minute Sura meeting before the council meeting next week?
Six thirty?
So six thirty?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
That's great. Good.
So we're meeting 6:30 Wednesday night.
Right.
We'll have everything.
And then we restore them.
So we'll have a Sura meeting, then we'll recess CD and P. So I'll reconvene CD and P so then we can accept the properties and then put them on the, for unanimous consent. Yeah, let's meet down here at 6:30.
And again, all three of those properties have been discussed previously.
Right.
Thank you.
Good. Okay, amending resolution 2013-62, sale of 8 School Street, Mr. Polster.
This one, it's actually the two lots that go together, it's 8th and 10th School Street. I made a typo, there was an error in the way, the section block and lot number was recited. I apologize for that. It's just, you've already voted on it, considered it, everything else, it's just a matter of correcting the SBL. Nothing else to change.
All right, second, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Good. Community action resolution, recognizing SCAP for 48 years.
Happy to move it.
Okay, second, Ms. Porterfield, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, and if there's nothing else to come before city development planning, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
No.
All right, and recess. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Porterfield? Okay, Ms. Prazo, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, I will call to order government operations, water treatment plant contractor, Mr. LaFon.
Do you want to sit?
I'd rather stand, that's okay.
Mr. Joe Davis is the senior water treatment plant operator for the city. Joe's been with the city for, let's say, 33 to 34 years. Joe is retiring, actually he put his papers in, Joe is retiring at the end of this month. Joe holds the appropriate certification under New York State Department of Health for our well field. The operator that's below Joe has one course to finish that will take him probably till fall to finish. We put on a second operator, a trainee, to start teaching him the jobs with Joe is going to be leaving. Joe has all the institutional knowledge on those water wells and we have some fairly large projects coming up in the capital budget. One is the new generator. Joe's knowledge of all the lines, water lines and electrical lines in the field. He has agreed to, with council approval, to stay on as a contractor, part-time, to assist the city until the end of the year. So we dropped it off a employment agreement for your review. It's not, it will not impact our budget negatively.
We're not contracted, we don't, I didn't say we're not giving them.
I.
No, she didn't.
Contract?
I didn't say it, I assumed it.
I gave it all to Tiffany. Tiffany had it a while back.
I don't know.
Or Carl, yeah. He said he's had everything down, so I apologize. I have a copy, but what it is, it's, yeah, the one page, it was sort of drafted as the past ones were drafted with Mr. Polino, Sharon Jordan, they're almost identical word for word. It's $30,000 for the remaining part of the year, $50 an hour. It's not to exceed $30,000 because under the, I believe, the New York State retirement rules, you can't make more than $30,000. The contract is really cancelable within 48 hours from either party, the city or Joe. And there's a clause in there, if we wanted to keep him on, we could keep him on after that, it would be a new contract for the 2014 if he's willing and if we needed him for the same thing, it's only $30,000. He'll have all the emergency on-call basis at the well field still and insist with any emergencies that the current staff would have problems with if they can't handle it.
Oh, I just have one question before, Mr. Erickson. The gentleman who's taking his last course, how long has he been in that department doing that sort of?
In order to reach the certification requirement, you have to be at the water wells for 10 years.
Okay, so he has pretty solid acting knowledge.
Yes, he just has to complete a existing course. And I believe he's taking it at Hudson Valley, starting in June.
And his position was a direct support to Mr. Davis?
Yeah, Joe was the senior operator and Steve was the operator.
Mr. Erickson?
So $50 an hour, what is he making that with hourly?
Joe's salary is roughly $67,000 or $68,000 a year. Sounds like you have a question.
Is it possible, would Mr. Davis be amenable to be on an on-call basis strictly for emergencies? To be honest with you, if somebody's been his support for 10 years, 10 years is a lot of time to put in to see the ins and outs of the daily operation.
Well, we're required in the New York State Department of Health to have an operator on site.
Okay, gotcha. That's something different.
So right now, he makes about 28 bucks an hour.
Yes.
So give or take, you're not, so, you know. How are we in a situation where we've got to now double, we're paying twice as much as we are currently at an hourly rate? Are we anticipating retirement or?
We anticipated the retirement, the payout is in the budget. But we didn't until 2013 get the approval to put in a trainee. If it, you know, Joe's requirement came up pretty quick for personal reasons.
If somebody becomes, like, at retirement age, what was the plan of, you know, Joe hit the lottery three years ago and just decided not to come in tomorrow, so to speak. I mean, what do we do? Should down the water system? And I'm assuming there's contingency plans, right?
We have two operators and I hold a water license, I hold one rate below it. If we had two, we'd have to make two. But there's the new trainee who came on, came on two months ago, it was in the 13 budget, okay, it was approved. So we advertised, we put on a trainee about two months ago and he's starting to learn. But in the past, new positions weren't always cool.
That seems like a risk that we took that we weren't really made aware of that this would happen. I'm not in favor of doubling someone's salary.
We, yeah, well, it's a third, yeah, if you look at the hourly rate, yes.
Well, we're also not benefits.
There are no benefits, no.
He's retired.
He's already paid benefits.
So he's got his benefits, right?
I can understand that.
So we're going to pay somebody twice as much per hour to do a job because we fill the plan that had to get somebody in place. Nothing catastrophic happened, we're, you know, unexpected, everything went along as planned and we just weren't prepared, so I'm not.
Joe hit the lottery and retired, we would still be looking for an operator that, for the right certification.
Right, we would pay Joe 50 bucks an hour to fill in, so I just think it's a lot of money.
Why aren't we actually going out to look for someone else as opposed to keeping him on the contractor, actually putting the job out there?
We will, we did advertise, okay, and we did have one candidate from the wastewater treatment plant, a current city employee, bid for the job and we moved him down there. But there's a process of learning. And under the rules of the Department of Health, that operator won't be eligible to get Joe's license for nine years and eight months. They have to put in, it's almost like an apprenticeship. So even once you get the credentials, if you take the prerequisite courses, you still have to have so many hours on that site, working under a licensed operator, which would be Joe Davis. If Joe is not retained, we don't have a licensed operator, so. If Joe is not retained, we don't have a licensed operator, so...
He's licensed.
I'm licensed as a two at Ecomon Water Plant. I would have to take another course and get some approval from the Health Department.
Would, would we have to go to the Health Department to get approval to say, hey, this other guy is close enough, and if I'm an employee that's retired?
I don't know if close enough matters, I want him to take the last course, and if we, you know, obviously it's a council.
What if he doesn't pass the test?
I mean, he doesn't pass the test. I mean, I can't answer why somebody doesn't pass a test.
Let's start at the beginning, I'm really getting confused now. What, what would happen if Mr. Davis had a debilitating accident or something like that? I mean, what, what?
Won the lottery, does that make sense?
Right, won the lottery. I mean, if Mr. Davis stopped showing up for work and wasn't employed by the city, what would...
We would have to try and find a one-B operator in the state of New York.
Okay.
Our pay rates for our employees are not very attractive. We will probably not recruit a one-B operator at the rates that the city currently pays, okay?
And that's not something you could pinch-hit as, in a temporary situation?
I'd have to get approval.
Okay.
Okay, I'm a two-A. I can run a water filtration plant, but the State Department of Health has some weird rules that our well fields, we don't really treat the water. We put some chlorine in, and then it just goes into the system. Okay, my license is to run a whole water filtration plant where there's different processes much more complex. They don't look at them, they have a different way of rating their licenses. So we could seek approval from the Health Department for a temporary basis. We can advertise for a one-A. I don't think we'll be successful. I don't think the, or the, the one-D, I don't think the one gentleman from Rotterdam's gonna come across the road. The SCUNA, all other municipalities have a considerably higher pay rate for their employees.
Right.
What we are trying in thirteen is, in the thirteen budget, we put in for a trainee to get somebody trained. Joe has been talking late in the year about possibly retiring, and we put the retirement payout in, and then he came forward and said for personal reasons, he does have to go. And we're trying to plan, so, and the, you know, with another position in the budget, we will fill another position and have three people at the water well fields, but the city's only had two people there for the last fifteen years or so, so. Every year when we come to budget process, we seem to cut lots of things, and we cut personnel, we don't approve extra employees without a lot of justification. And fortunately, we do, you know, there's poor planning on all the parts of this, that there are positions in the city that we lose a lot of institutional knowledge, but we don't have somebody on bat or in the dugout waiting to take that on because we don't have the funds to put that extra person on for that learning curve.
But right now, we're good because we have a guy who's been there nine months and, or nine years and X months.
Steve has been there.
So do, are we, um, have, I mean, I agree with Carl that doubling somebody's hourly rate is, is, is concerning, especially when we're asking our city employees to go without raises and things of that nature. So, um, is it fair to say that we might go to Mr. Davis with something equal to his salary and benefits right now as an hourly rate?
We could.
And if he turns it down, then we go through the approval process with you to oversee this until our other gentleman is up to speed in the fall?
We can oversee it jointly between myself, the two other gentlemen that are there, the one that's training, and we could, I can bring Joe in, and we can discuss it with Joe to see if there's some type of compromise.
Everyone else comfortable with that? Anybody have some questions, comments, Mr. Regge?
Yeah, I guess we're kind of making an argument to go back to privatization, to the plant, that's what it seems like, I mean, for running into these roadblocks. We wouldn't have to worry about that.
What would the private company have done?
If somebody was retiring, they'd have hired somebody two years ago.
Well, they were here.
He worked there. No, no, this is not the wastewater treatment plant, this is the water wells.
Those water wells.
The cities run the water wells continuously. Okay, yes. The wastewater treatment plant is doing very well.
Miss Tate? And I just feel like Paul has, has got a plan in place to, to make sure everything's covered. We've got a valued city employee who's willing to stay around and, and help us out with stuff, so I think we should, you know, you know, granted, if we can negotiate a little bit on the salary, there's no budget impact on this.
Joe has also done the SCADA work at the plant on his own. Joe put the SCADA system in at the water wells years ago. Joe's the only one familiar with the SCADA system. He, he designed it. It calls his cell phone. He can get on that cell phone and monitor the plant. That's his system, he put that in. Years ago, whether it was a financial issue, but years ago, Joe, Joe made that system and put it in. So he's the one that has the working knowledge of that system. Slowly, where Joe's been teaching Steve, but, you know, for the last several years, there's only been two people at those, at the well fields, and they cover seven days a week with two people.
Yep. And so, but we have, we have one coming up.
One is...
He's got some time doing it, but at least he's...
One gentleman we just brought on, has quite a bit of time to, to get to his appropriate licensing level, and the gentleman who's been there does just have one course, and I'm hoping he'll be licensed by, before the, by the end of the year.
That's great. And, you know, I mean, I, you, you know, the city has done a good job in the, in the skeleton crew that we work with, in that we have somebody who's gonna step up to the position in a matter of months. So if we can come up with a Band-Aid that's a little more palatable for a couple of months, that would be helpful. So, again, is everybody okay?
And the other thing would be to do a six-month contract with him?
Well, that's what this is.
That's what this is.
It is, technically.
Just to the end of the year.
It's thirty thousand dollars for the remaining part of the year.
But it doubles his salary.
Right, I understand.
I'm sorry, did you have this...
Yeah, I just have one other question. You talked about that he created this, this process that goes to his cell phone. Is someone else learning that process, know that process?
Stolen, yep. But not everybody has the expertise in developing software as Joe does, okay? These are things that were, you know, years ago, that, you know, for the lack of anything, you know, Joe implemented some things at the plant years and years ago to better monitor that plant because of his expertise with computers and software. And he did that, you know, so that plant could be monitored, and alarms would go to his phone, and, you know, he pretty much designed a lot of that in-house.
Yes, Mr. Erickson?
I think, I mean, there's a couple of things here that are concerning these one operators, to the point, anytime you have one individual that has so much control over the operation of the plant, that if they disappear, you know, it's home, it's homegrown software seems to be a risk to the community.
It's not homegrown. He's just developed, he's got some software in there that made it easier to operate the plant, monitor the plant remotely, because it's only two people. To bring people up all the time...
But he's the only one that knows how to use it, right?
No, he probably knows more intricately everything about it, but the second person now has that, that cell phone, and he's monitoring it too. There are components of it that, that Joe is the most comfortable person with, like my instrumentation specialist at the wastewater treatment plant. I know how to wire a house, but I can't go down there and adjust a VFD, you know, the programming and that, so we rely on one electrician. We have one electrician in the city. I don't know if you're recommending you hire a couple more electricians and get them trained, I'd gladly do it if Joe approved the budget.
Right, I would think that the procedure would be a documented procedure that indicates how all these things are documented, so that somebody new who's somewhat, has some aptitude to this line of work could come in and say, here's the booklet, everything that this person's been doing over ten years is documented, and it's a work plan, so I could figure out how to get through and keep water flowing. I just think that when you tie a major operation to one individual, that person has a tremendous amount of power and control over us, and they're able to come and...
Our operators can control it. We won't stop our waters. Pumps aren't gonna be turned off, but Joe does totally hold the appropriate license. If you'd like, and when I give them tonight, is I will bring Joe back to the table and see if we can come up with a compromise to work a better deal and to keep Joe there.
I'd be happy with his current salary, his, you know, current pay, not adding in health benefits, he's gonna get help, he doesn't need health benefits twice. So whatever he's making now as a salary and hourly rate, I would be wish, I would be fine with going forward with it for however long he feels appropriate, but I'm not interested in being pleased or, you know, I think every other employee has an important job to be watching and saying, I mean, I retire unexpectedly, I could do the same thing, and I really don't want to set a precedent.
Point, we'll take it.
And I'd just like to make a suggestion that we, if we could tie this system into somehow the city system, so it could be monitored from City Hall or, it can happen.
I mean, monitoring it, you have to have, the, the individual has to be able to respond and make a correction, and there's nobody at City Hall that can go to the water plant or the water wells and make that correction. So having it come to here at City Hall, it's the operator in charge who makes the adjustment on the pumps, or the chemical feeds, or if there's a loss in line pressure, or he realizes that the, ensuring now he's pumping, there are extra three million gallons of water, which indicates that there's, there's a major break somewhere. But to send that to City Hall, to the police station, to the fire department, is pretty much, it's like sending a, you know, or somebody having me respond to a police call. I'm not gonna know what to do when I get there.
Well, I'm just saying, in addition to having it go to their phone, it's just sort of like a backup, you know, in case things happen to cell phones all the time. I dropped mine in the puddle today. So, you know, really, we, we should have a system.
So in, in the thirty years that we've been pumping the water, and Joe's pumping the water, we have not run out of water. We, we have safety, you know, factors in place, you know, they're, they're always on-call these guys, and for the last thirty years, to have two people, well, thirty years, for the last ten, fifteen years, to have two people there and never lose a day of water supply or have a water restriction, that's a lot to say for the staff that was there. Is two people too little? Yes.
Yeah.
Is one electrician in the city too little? Yes. So we'll remember that come July, right?
So, understood. The, the, what we're discussing at hand right now is Mr. Davis, and I think you're clear on what the council desires, so go forth and...
We'll see if we can strike a better deal.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. Appreciate it. Okay.
I won't go far.
Oh, city golf, golf course water agreement.
Was that gonna be curbed for executive section?
Stadium golf course.
Those contract negotiations, that should be...
Okay, so we have to recess and not adjourn. And call for public hearing, please, for public assembly inspections, Mr. Pollster.
Actually, I have some financials I have to...
Mr. Salamon.
So currently, the state of New York has basically an unfunded mandate on municipalities that we carry out certain public assembly inspections. And basically, what they require is certain establishments that have a certain number of people that congregate there, we have to inspect them either every year, every two years, every three years, depending on the purpose of the establishment. Most municipalities charge for these inspections. The city of Schenectady has not charged. We, you know, we have code inspectors who spend, you know, anywhere from a third or more of the year focused on nothing more than these, these inspections. And we looked at what other municipalities were charging for these, the city of Albany, some other cities around, and we came up with a proposal, a fee proposal that we think is reasonable. Currently, the city of Albany, the minimum inspection fee is a hundred and twenty-five dollars, which is for a facility under five thousand square feet. From there, it goes up to, I believe, a hundred and seventy-five, and there, up over two hundred, and then they don't have a cap, so once you get up to a certain period, a certain amount, it's a couple hundred dollars plus change for every square foot above that minimum, and that, you know, if you're the Times Union Center, you're paying a hefty amount. What we're proposing is a, a minimum fee of seventy-five dollars, and then from there, it would go up to a hundred and twenty-five, and then it would go and cap at two hundred and fifty dollars. You know, we, we don't want to be unreasonable, we can't make money off of this, that's not the purpose of this. The purpose of this is to, you know, pay for our expenses, you know, the state mandates that we spend our money in certain ways, and they don't provide any way for us to pay for it, and, you know, that's basically what the purpose of this is.
Okay, so this would be an inspection done by codes?
Correct. They carry out those inspections already.
And if we couldn't get to every place of public assembly every year, I mean, is this something that's done through billing, or that when the inspection actually occurs, or...
We have, we have to, and we do. We carry these out every year.
Okay.
The, the ones that are mandated, you know, there's some that are on a yearly, and some are on a five-yearly, and some that are on, you know, a triennial. But we, we do perform the inspections that we need to perform, that's not...
It's not negotiable.
That's not the issue. The issue, yeah, the issue is how do we pay for it, and, you know, we're not proposing, you know, a fee that's so, you know, egregious to be driving people out of business.
Can City Hall afford this one hundred and forty-five dollars?
Say again?
I mean, I assume we're gonna have to be inspected, right? At City Hall, can the city afford?
I believe, I, you know, Jeff did do a, did a great job with the flasher budget, I think that we can...
Mrs. Ruffey, you had a question?
Give me some examples of public assembly places that are inspected. Restaurants?
Hotels, restaurants, stuff like this. And we, you know, we, we carry out the, you know, I mean, we carry out the inspections every year, so that's where we're at.
I'm sorry, Mr. Erickson?
How is this gonna affect our revenue lines and expense lines?
Well, it, I mean, it ought, it ought to be budget neutral.
Right, I'm saying, we're gonna, right now, we're already doing the work, so we've been doing the work, so I would imagine there's not an expense line increase, but we're gonna collect much revenue, so that would be, that's always a good thing, we have more revenue and less expenses, but do we know what the adjustment, do we have an estimate of what we expect to take in, and then...
We do not, you know, this is the call for the public hearing, I can talk to Eric Schilling, he had been, I had been working on this with him, he might have a better idea as far as the numbers. I did see the numbers, it's, it's a few hundred inspections, but I don't have a breakdown from him as far as how many are of each type, and of which ones of those are yearly, you know, you know, obviously, some years you're gonna make more, and then you're gonna have less for two years.
So since we've actually been doing them, we have the data, so someone should actually be able to come up and say, we expect to get so many dollars a year, you know, borrowing a new building, opening up or an old building closing down.
Yeah, I mean, you would have, theoretically, you would have a...
We could budget pretty actively.
You would have to budget, like, for a three-year period, because obviously, for the facilities that are, you know, every third year, you'd be adding those to the ones that are every year.
Okay, that's good, this is called a public hearing.
Mr. Erickson, do you have a question? Miss Porterfield?
Yes, I just want to know, does this include churches and other nonprofit?
Um, I believe that there are inspections for those. I'm not entirely, I'm not entirely certain as far as, I know Albany does charge for them. You know, I think that would be, you know, obviously, after the public hearing, you'd hear what the public has to say, and then you could, you know, take that into account as far as what you guys want to do.
Well, since it's just calling for a public hearing, I'm with it. Yes.
I will say.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Great. Transfer of surplus vehicles for city use, Mr. Pollster.
We spoke about this briefly, and actually, I want to move it one cycle. I spoke with Eric Schilling, just to bring you up to speed. He has vehicles that he needs now, he has borrowed them from facilities, and Carl Olson is on vacation, and I have not been able to talk to him, find out how much of a hardship it has been to give up the two vehicles that are very tough, so I don't know yet, I can't make a recommendation as to whether or not we should accept the vehicles.
Okay, so two weeks it is. Towing fee ordinance.
That one also, based upon some of the comments that were made at the public hearing, I want to provide some more information to you. I'm just moving that to this.
Okay. Is, is there any sense in, anyone giving you information that they'd like to see included, or is that better for discussion in two weeks?
Better for discussion in two weeks.
Very good. Okay, so I will ask for a motion to recess government operations, a second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
All right, call to order health and recreation, first, a rebuttal, a rebuttal permit for Union College Community Board, Mr. Wallace.
Do you want me to take this, please?
Yeah, if you'd like to speak, go out on the floor.
Sure. We have a student from Union College that contacted me, actually, at Proctor's, to do a community social art experiment, I guess, or display. to do a community social art experiment, I guess, or display. There is a woman named Candy Chang. She's on TED Talks, if anybody's familiar with TED Talks. And she's done some very interesting social art displays that are very interactive in communities. She originates from New Orleans. And as we all know, there were many, many derelict buildings in New Orleans. And after experiencing the loss of someone she loved very much, she took the side of a very rundown building and painted it with chalkboard paint. And she stenciled at the top, "Before I Die," and then at each line, "I Want To." And the whole wall filled up, and people were writing in tiny little spaces and, you know, everywhere, all of this. And it's since gone, not only throughout the United States, but internationally. It's been in all different countries. It translated into those, into that language. So, anyway, a Union College student who was very interested in providing this in the city of Schenectady as a social, for lack of a better word, experiment. They went to their engineering departments, completely and totally funded through Union College, and holds a $1 million liability insurance cause as well. It's a tri-fold, so it's a three-panel kind of kiosk. We've met with the merchants on J Street, which is the first place. It will be, if approved by the council, it will be in four different locations over the course of the summer for three weeks each, starting on J Street, moving to Upper Union Street, and then Jerry Burrell Park, and then Central Park. Union College will oversee the upkeep of it, making sure there's chalk, making sure if there's anything inappropriate, it's wiped down. There's a little bit of a lip over it for rain. It will be wiped down when it's filled. In the meantime, there's a, we're putting together a Facebook page so that people's comments will be photographed and posted to the Facebook page. Really, Google it, because it's very interesting what people accomplish. She does all sorts of different things.
What do we Google?
I'm sorry?
"Before I Die."
Before, Candy Chang is her name, "Before I Die," yeah. And it's a TED Talk. So, the three-panel, Standee and Shilpa is the name of the student who's kind of spearheading this. She's done all of the work from start to finish, including the application for the permit. I'm just kind of her voice tonight. She couldn't be here. She's graduating this year. So, she's a little busy. But it will be chained and locked from the inside, and it will be placed around a tree so it can't blow away, it can't be stolen, it can't, you know. And again, the J Street merchants, specifically Austin Fisher and the woman from Crossroads, are very willing to not only clean it, but police it, photograph it along with Proctors, along with DSIC. DSIC is going to be responsible for putting it in their truck and moving it to the next location and securing it. So, she's really well thought out on her part. And again, no cost to the city at all.
That's a good idea. Makes it very creative. So, we'll look for a motion to approve.
Just one quick question. Moving it from place to place, it's just going to be the one board, and then they'll move it, and at the end of what time period is it over?
Every three weeks in those four locations. So, by the end of the summer, the project will be wrapped up. Yep. And it's, yeah, it's all hinged together. So, it kind of encloses and locks on the inside. Okay.
I will move.
A second?
One, sorry. A second.
All those in favor? Aye. Anything else to come before Health and Recreation?
Do we adjourn?
A second.
All those in favor? Call to order Public Service and Utilities. Mr. Wallace for the construction paving.
Either just colored handouts of what you have in front of you already, just so we can kind of go over this a little bit easier. Chuck, would you like one? John, you want one? So, what this is before you is our 2013 paving program is what we are calling it. It is our annual paving project that we put out. Our bids, like we had talked about previously, they actually came back extremely competitive. Separating one and two was $12,000, and one to three was $18,000. So, on a plus $1 million project to separate by $18,000 is pretty remarkable to have bids come in that close. As you see here, I just wanted to show you that on this colored sheet that I handed out, kind of a little bit of transparency. What you see here is that we will be awarding, or not awarding, we'll be discussing tonight, the paving program, which is $1.182 million. However, parts of this paving program are also shown here in the red as costs to be encumbered under the paving program. It's kind of a multifaceted program. Dev, you'd like the colored one. I printed one for you. It's a multifaceted project that we've gotten into over these last couple of years, previous to me even being here. What you see here in the large box that's shaded green with the bid price is what was put out to bid. 1A, 1B, and 1C are what we're calling these funds. The streets under 1A, those are our reconstruction streets and our milling. Carey Street is the street that we proposed to do curb and sidewalk work on as part of the north end revitalization. 1B are streets that the contractor is looking to mill, hence the low bid price, but the city forces will be paying. We'll be reimbursing them through our CHIPS fund that we talked about earlier, hence $200,000 portion you see with city pave. That is also true with certain portions of these streets that'll be under CDBG money. Now, as we move down to 1C, you'll see these streets here. These are going to be treated using our hot mix recycling program. The reason that that's not included in this is that, as you'll see in the next one that we're going to talk about, that is under the county reciprocal agreement plan, whereas we can accept bids that were given to the county as, I don't want to say subordinates, but as municipalities within the county. So, that was our approximation using their bid prices of what we're going to have. So, if you add the contract price that we have in front of us to our estimated cost to be encumbered, you'll get our total paving project cost of this year of $1.88 million. And then, below that, you'll see what our budgets are right now that we're working with. So, we do have the available funds to cover the project.
Any questions?
One of the questions we emailed back and forth while I was back on. And the other sheet that I had looked at a couple of weeks ago had the ability for me to calculate your cost per linear foot.
Oh, right, we talked about that.
And so, the projects where we did the curbs and sidewalks, which I think are pretty important for the city, it seemed to be somewhat in line, consistent in terms of cost per linear foot. And then, we had, you know, some outliers, and this year's budget was kind of an outlier. And so, when the prices came in, did it get back in line in terms of?
I haven't actually broken it out. I can, I didn't think to break it out like that because we got them on Wednesday. We had such a quick turnaround to get them into this cycle because, like we said, we want to get these out, this paving contract, early as possible. Like, I don't know if anyone saw the article on the table, but I say, I really want to get this in and ready in April, you know? And, you know, it took me a little while to get this together, to work with everyone, to get a list of streets that everyone found acceptable. So, but I can get you those numbers and kind of show you in the same graphical way of an actual, because we went back after those emails. We took all those numbers and we actually pulled all the contracts to make sure our actual numbers, what they were. And then, we left those as projections. So, we can go back and check these and make them actual now. So, I can do that.
That would help me just to understand, you know, how cost per linear foot compares to prior years. It's just a good way to look at it to make sure it weren't in line or understand what's changed and what's not.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I will.
You don't?
No, I'm not.
No. Oh, yes, I'm sorry, a second.
All those in favor? Aye. Okay, the contract with Hot Mix, that's what we're scheduling.
Like I previously should mention, this is something that we have done in the past couple of years. It is to, I guess the word would be, I actually don't, John, what is the action that we'd be taking with something like this to approve under the county? This is to?
It's essentially the same thing that we do. It's the process that we want. And I think you're all familiar with what the process is.
Not, not the hot mix process. The process of this wasn't bid by us. This is a county. So, we would be going under the county. So, this just needs approval from the committee to accept the prices that were given to the county.
Yes.
Okay. Because this is my first issue like this that we would piggyback on to the counties.
Mr. Erickson?
Yeah, I think we just will move to approve.
Okay.
You know, authorize the mayor to enter the contract to pave the road through using this process.
Using this process as.
We're just piggybacking on to.
On to the county, correct.
Are there any questions?
I'll move.
Second, all those in favor? Aye. Okay, anything else to come before Public Service and Utilities?
Make motion.
A second. All those in favor? Aye.
Call to order claims and discuss everything on claims and stadium golf course. Motion to go on the executive session.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Executive session.